Okay, good evening all. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Town of East Bridge Water Planning Board. It's Monday evening, April 4th, 2022. It's exactly 7:00 PM according to my tablet in front of me here. Currently present for the board, our regular members, Rob Ken, John Lawler, Christine Hanley, Edward O'Leary, myself, Roy Gardner, also present, associate member Kevin Riley, also present representing the Planning Building Department, Dot Simpson and Ellen McKenzie. Just for everyone's information, this meeting is being recorded. If anyone wishes to record the meeting on their own, please just let us know. It is allowed under Massachusetts state law, but state law does require that you notify the chair that you do intend to record the meeting. First item of business on tonight's agenda is we have minutes of March 21st, 2022.
We move to forego reading of the minutes of March 21st, 2022, and to approve the draft as presented.
That's a motion Riley, do we have a second?
Second.
It's a motion Riley with a second Hanley. Any further discussion on the motion? All those who favor the motion to accept the minutes with the waiting, reading of the minutes waived, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that six in favor, none opposed. Just note for the record, we'll call it 7:02 PM. Regular member Sherri Bates is also present. Next item on our agenda for this evening is Elmwood Court in West Street. The selectmen have voted to put Elmwood Court on the agenda for acceptance for upcoming annual town meeting. They have forwarded to us their documents, including the order of taking. We need to formally vote to make a recommendation at annual town meeting. We could do that here tonight, or we could propose that we put that our agenda for our next meeting. What's the, what's the date for annual town meeting this year?
It's the week after May 4th. I can't see the calendar. Or May 2nd, what's it?
2nd is the first Monday.
2nd is the Monday, so the 9th.
And then the next one after that is the 9th?
Yep.
9th.
That's the annual town meeting.
Alright, so we do have one more regularly scheduled meeting. Is it this month we don't have a second meeting, or is it next month? It's this month, right? So we do have one more regularly scheduled meeting, which would be May 2nd, which is prior to annual town meeting. So we could either vote tonight to make a positive recommend, or make any recommendation, I should say, I guess, to, to accept a roadway as a, as a public way to forward that and report to town meeting on that, or we could defer that. The official recommendation to meeting of May 2nd, if anyone has any questions or wishes to further review the status of that. I can simply say that we have received all of the documentation required. Selectmen have confirmed that with town council, that we have all the documents necessary for the, for the related takings. We do have the ASBIL plan in hand. The ASBIL plan has been reviewed and appears to meet all of our requirements at this point in time, so I guess, depending on the, on the pleasure of the board, we could, we could vote tonight to make that recommendation to accept the roadway to annual town meeting, or we could defer so everyone could further review if, if so needed to our first meeting in May. So what's your pleasure?
Motion to accept.
Okay, so, so, so we've got a got a motion, O'Leary, in a, in a second Hanley, to make an affirmative recommendation at town meeting that we accept the roadway as a public way. I'll modify that slightly because we're actually making a recommendation that
Right.
that we concur that we should be accepting the roadway. Any, any discussion on the motion? I believe the gentleman sitting in front of us is the
Developer.
is the developer applicant, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but
No questions, other than the fact that I really wanted to thank Dorothy here, who's really helped us quite a bit. We've, the neighbors there have been waiting for well over a year to get this done. I was just down there, it looks really beautiful. They've done a nice job actually doing the cul-de-sac themselves. We have a little homeowners association. All the houses are built, I think it's a great addition to your, to your town, and I know they're really looking forward to having the town take that over, so I would thank you very much.
And just for the record, can we have your name, please?
Elliot Schneider.
Thank you Elliot.
Yes.
I do agree, it's a, it's a well-done subdivision, everything seems to be working very well, the drainage system seems to work very well. Given all of that, then, and the motion on the table to, to make an affirmative recommendation at annual town meeting, that the town vote to accept the roadway. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as unanimous vote of all seven members present in voting. Thank you.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Gardner.
Certainly.
I know we have, we haven't asked for any of our bond reduction. Do we have to come to another meeting for that, or will the bond be returned? How do we?
What I would, what I would simply suggest is that you send us a letter
Okay.
confirming that we voted to recommend acceptance at annual town meeting.
Okay.
Once we've received that, that letter, we can officially notify the, whichever of the three departments, the treasurer, the collector, or the, whoever it is downstairs to release the remaining bond.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much, Board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion on Sully's Lane. Ellen, are we supposed to actually call him?
See, I think he accepted the invite.
So while we're attempting to, to access the developer of Sully's, Sully's Lane, which is down off of
South of West Pond.
Is it West Pond? It's West Pond Street, right? I always get confused, because when I go down to Pond Street, I don't view that as actually being West Pond, but that's the name on the street, so I would call that my somewhat maybe unbalanced view of geography to be South Pond Street, but it is called West Pond Street. So there's, somehow originally there got to be some confusion on, on Sully's Lane, which is a small subdivision off West Pond Street. Sully's Lane basically, I guess depending on how you want to look at it, has three houses on it. Well, two of those houses have almost all of their legal frontage on West Pond Street. Sully's Lane effectively is a, legally it's not a one-lot subdivision, but it provides the primary frontage for a single lot, which is to the rear of Sully's Lane. To the right-hand side of Sully's Lane, the way it was originally designed, the road slopes off to the right, there's an in-ground infiltration system all along, what would be the north side, I guess the east side, depending on where you're, north and east on Sully Lane. The subdivision approval letter required that there be a berm placed, that was added as part of the approval, a berm on the, on that side of the road, along with a sidewalk, which would interfere with the fact that there's no in-ground drainage in, in Sully's Lane. It was designed to be run off to the outside with an infiltration, infiltration area, so as we get to the point where we're trying to finish up, it was noted that there's no berm on that side of the road. I went down and looked at it again today, and it was, it wasn't designed originally to have a berm there, so my recommendation would be that, based on the request from the applicant, and I'm not sure if he's actually is there, because I can see him up there.
I hear you, Mayor.
Joe, can you hear us? Yes. Okay.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you. So my recommendation to the board would be that we go ahead based on the, on the developer's request to, is to waive the sidewalk and the berm, because that would defeat the intent of the entire drainage system, which was, it's one of those few in town where we're using what I would refer to as the low-impact development. As adding a berm and putting a sidewalk on that side of the road would would probably defeat the entire functionality of the infiltration that was built on that side of the road, since the sidewalk would basically be on top of it, and the berm would run the water to the rear, which it wasn't intended to do in the original design, so given that, I'll if you think you need to add anything to that, Joe, or if
No, I think that's fine. It's a one-lot subdivision, and we built the roadway according to the plan, because we were draining it over to the right. Putting berm on would end up making a pool on the, the water won't drain anywhere.
Well, it would end up draining to the bottom of the subdivision, where there's no design drainage built in, because it was originally designed to drain off to the right side of the road, if I, if I remember correctly and looked at the plans correctly and looked at the site this morning correctly, right? So is there, anyone on the board that have, has a question on that? So given that, I, I think we could entertain a motion to, to waive construction of the berm on the right-hand side of the road, as well as the sidewalk?
That makes the most sense, right? I mean, you can't do anything about it now, is that correct?
Yeah, the drainage would need to change if we put a berm in.
Right. Yeah, so.
So is that, is that your motion then, John?
That would be, yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion, Lawler, do we have a second to that motion?
Translate it for me.
Yeah, I'll second you.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion, Lawler, excuse me, second, O'Leary, to grant the requested waiver of elimination of the Cape Cod berm and the sidewalk on the right-hand side of the road. Further discussion on the further discussion on the motion?
Are you any intention to accept this as a town road in the future, or?
It has not been intended to accept it as a town road to, to, as, as Mr. Cooley just noted, and as we discussed during the original subdivision hearing, it effectively is a one-lot subdivision, acknowledging that the, the fire chief did request that the design of the houses on that site be modified slightly to, instead of accessing the, the garages from the original West Pond Street because of its physical, physical location in West Pond, that it would be a better design to access the Touca garages from the, from the actual new roadway. Other than that, my expectation is it would remain a, a private roadway as, as a, and treat it as if it's a one-lot subdivision, since it basically serves as single hubs. Given, given that discussion, any further questions? Anyone here in the, in the room have any questions? Okay, then on the motion to, to proceed with a, a waiver of the Cape Cod berm and, and the sidewalk for Sully's Lane, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No vote.
I'm going to show that as six in favor, none opposed, with associate member Kevin Riley abstaining, since that's an action under the subdivision control law.
Mm-hmm.
We'll record that as six, again, six in favor, none opposed, unanimous vote of all members present in voting. Thank you all for that. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Germaine, and Board members. Have a great night.
Okay, next item on our agenda tonight is, we have a Form A plan for 49 Keith Place.
Excuse me, Warren, that's a typo. It's 46.
Forty-six Keith Place.
Forty-six.
Okay, so we should have that, that, that plan in our, in our notebooks that are on So as noted on the plan, it says the intent of this plan is to divide assessors map 62 Lot 80 into two new lots. Shown here on is, is Lot A and Lot B. So this is in an R3 zone with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. Minimum frontage is 100 feet. Building square is 75 feet, since it's 75 percent, a square 75 percent of the frontage, which would be 75 feet on each side. Current building would end up on what is shown on the plan as Lot A. Lot A would have a frontage of 130.83 feet, Lot B would have a frontage of 100.67 feet. Lot A would be just short of an acre. Three-quarters of that's upland. Lot B would be just under 32,000 square feet. Where 12,000 square feet is contiguous uplands. I do not, I do note on the plan that although the wetlands line is drawn in from what I believe to be the zoning map, but there is a note on the plan that the extent of the wetlands has not been determined. It's not clear from the way the plan is drawn and the way the notes are whether or not the, the wetlands line shown here has actually been flagged and, and accepted by the Conservation There's also a note on the plan that says wetland delineation was performed by five wetlands on April 14th, 2021. So that would have been early spring about a year ago. There was also a note on the Lot B identification that it has 11,795 square feet of contiguous uplands. Since the minimum lot size required is 15,000 square feet, the minimum contiguous uplands would be 7,500 square feet. It has roughly 50% more than that, so so given that, I believe we can entertain a motion to endorse the plan as a, as a Form A plan. Which in the words of the subdivision control law means that approval under subdivision control is not required. So I'll leave that out to the members of the board. Anyone have any questions? So I'll make a motion that we endorse the plan for 46 Keith Place, referencing assessors map 62 Lot 80, prepared for Michelle O'Hearn. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
So that's a motion, Gardner, second, Lawler. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No vote.
So we'll show that as a vote of six in favor, none opposed, with with member Riley abstaining, since again, this is a, this is an action taken under subdivision control. Thank you all for that. Next item on the agenda is a site plan review for 47 West Union Street. So we have a picture of that up on the screen right now. Is the applicant present that's, could you come up to the front if you would, please? So this is, this is an existing parcel of land that's on West Union Street. To the rear of West Union Street, or where that dimension, 111.93 feet is, is, is the old railroad right-of-way, railroad easement, whatever we want to call that. I know I've seen it somewhere, but I don't see it up on that plan. The, the actual square footage of that parcel is, is only in the range of 20,000 square feet.
Thirty-seven hundred.
Thirty-seven hundred?
Yes.
So it is a small parcel of land?
It's a, it's a small parcel, yes.
It's been used for many, many years by, I believe it's the owner of the land who had a, a small building on that, who runs an electrician's business?
Yes, that's me.
That's you?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry, could I have your names, please, for the record?
Yes, Mark Swedco.
Marcelino Montrongo.
Okay, thank you.
Your.
So Mr. Swedco has, has used that as his, as his legal address for a long time for his electrical business. There's an application pending with the billing inspector to use that property as a, to sell used cars. The billing inspector has indicated to us that he's satisfied that provided all of the items shown on that plan are maintained. We should be okay. I, I believe the, the way the billing inspector came up with the, his view of that, we can fit four cars on that space for sale at any given time.
Yeah.
It is within the downtown business district, so it has no requirement for customer parking directly on the site, as in that area, on-street parking is allowed. So the billing inspector has indicated that, that he has no issues with that. The office, if you will, for the purposes of the legal address of the license that would be issued by the Board of Selectmen, would be the, the small steel building that's existing in the site that's based on that plan, 25 feet by 14 feet. So, so given that, I'll leave it up to the board to ask any questions, or so from discussions with the billing inspector, the, the billing inspector recognizes that a, a used car business effectively is, is a specialty business, and then it requires additional licensing over and above what the planning board can allow under, under the retail use category, but his view is that, that his limitations and, and therefore his recommendation to us is based on the fact that that is a, a retail business district under the zoning bylaw. It's up to the selectmen to determine, to determine whether or not they will issue a license and what conditions they will put on that license, over and above what's shown on the site plan. I would note for the record that based on the site plan that's been submitted to us, the maximum number of cars allowed at that site for sale at any given point in time will be four. We will pass that information on to the Board of Selectmen. And again, that's based on the discussions with the, the billing inspector, billing commissioner, I guess I should say more correctly, who's also our zoning enforcement officer, and advises on, on the zoning requirements in This is a, a site plan, so technically speaking, it doesn't, it doesn't fall directly within either special permit or subdivision control, so given our past legal advice, I, I would offer that, that member, associate member Kevin Riley is free to both discuss and record a vote on this, on this site plan approval. Further discussion, questions? Motion to approve the site plan, wherever we are, I'll leave it up to the board at this point.
I would do one of two things. I'd either ask the applicant to agree to, to continue this, or to withdraw it, or otherwise I'd be prepared to make a motion to deny it. I don't believe it satisfies in any respect the requirements of Section 13 of our bylaw. Supposed to have an engineered plan. Supposed to have sufficient off-street parking, although I respect the comment that you've just made. There's no indication on this plan as to any modification that would be made relative to the surface of the site, so whether it would be paved, gravelled, anything to prevent oil, gas from leaking into the soil from vehicles that are stored there. There's nothing to indicate what would be done to the building, which is in need of something, I think. And having looked at it, I mean, you're basically wedging two cars on the right-hand side of that building between a fire hydrant and a telephone pole, up against a fence that separates that lot from the butters lot, so if the applicant wants to come back with something a little more definitive, I would certainly maybe entertain it, but I don't think in its present form it's approvable.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions, comments?
Same.
All right, so given that and the fact that we've got at least three members sitting here on the board in concurrence, then...
So can I ask a question?
Certainly.
So I've driven around the town looking at different car dealerships. My property goes right up to the sidewalk, so from the street to my property line is 10 feet. Why am I required to do another 10-foot buffer when everywhere I look, most of the car dealerships are right on the property line? I mean, it's a small lot, I understand that. I don't understand why I need 10-foot buffer from my property line back to where the first car, let's say, would be set. I mean, that's...
Now, that question would actually have to be answered by the zoning enforcement office, who's the building commissioner.
Okay.
I know we have in the past required multiple car dealerships, including the used car dealership up at the intersection of Laurel Street and Route 106, to paint a white line 10 feet back off the roadway to make sure cars are not put into that area.
What, 10 feet off the roadway? This is putting me 20 feet off the roadway.
Well, in his case, it's 10 feet off the roadway. The roadway layout varies to where that is. He provided a... That's one of the problems we have here. We don't have an actual engineered plan, so we don't really know where the roadway line is. Pavement and roadway are not the same thing.
Yep.
The roadway layout is typically 40 feet wide. Pavement in most areas in town is between 20 feet and 25 feet. So there's a 15-foot area that's not really defined very well anywhere, that can only be identified with a surveyor's work, so... I do agree with the comments made that the site plan approval does require an engineered plan, showing where the exact dimensions are and where the boundaries are.
Well, I took this right off the engineering plan for my septic system, which is an engineered plan. So this is same exact as the engineering plan I got for the septic.
So my suggestion, based on the comments made in the concurrence with the members of the board, is to go back to whatever engineer drew that septic plan and ask them to effectively put the same thing that's on that sketch plan onto a new plan using the information he had gathered when he did the septic plan.
So what's going to change? Nothing, other than an engineer's stamp?
Which is kind of important in the state of Massachusetts for land use. I don't disagree with Member Riley's comments on the fact that without an engineered plan, we're relying what amounts to a pencil sketch of where the boundaries are. So I guess we have two options. We could continue this with a waiver of...
But if the building inspector, okay, was good with this, why, I don't understand why...
Well, the billing inspector doesn't vote on the site plan, this board does.
Right.
This board is required to receive an engineered plan, so Member Riley and at least two other members of the board's comment were correct that without an engineered plan, we shouldn't be actually voting on a site plan approval. So we have two options, that we continue the date timeline until such time as we receive an engineered plan, or as Member Riley offered, he would make a motion to disapprove the plan in its current format. It's up to you which one of those options you want to accept.
So why didn't I need an engineering plan to run my electrical business out of it? I mean, I parked on the property, I mean, I worked out of it, that was okay.
I can't answer that question. It's been there as long as I can remember, so... And I've been here a very long time, going on 40 years, so...
I understand.
I can't answer that question. Under the current bylaw, an engineered plan is required to show that as well as an actual... Again, as Member Riley referenced, we should see what improvements are intended to be made there.
Yep.
As the picture clearly showed, almost all of that is simply grassed.
Right.
Blocking used car in a grassed area.
Yeah, it would be grass. I mean, most likely gravel or a certain portion of it paved where the cars would be sitting on.
We'd need to know what that is. So again, I'll leave the option up to you. Either we can vote to deny the plan at this point, you'd have to come back and start again.
Right.
We can defer the vote until our next meeting, at which time we could potentially have an engineered plan available.
Okay, so we just defer it and we're going to the engineering address.
All right, so I'll take Member Riley's comment to be a motion to accept a defer to the next meeting before taking action on this, until we receive an engineered plan, if that's okay, Kevin?
I'll move to continue with 2:07.
I believe the next meeting is...
7:05 PM on...
Oh, excuse me. We have like three public hearings next month, so it's not going to be till sometime after...
We'll defer to May 2nd.
Time out, time out.
We'll defer to May 2nd.
I was going to make a motion to May 16th at 7:15.
May 16th at 7:15. Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a... We'll call that a motion, Riley, 2nd O'Leary, to defer until 7:15 PM on...
May 16th, we said?
Yes. May 16th. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you all. Okay, couple of things to quickly go over here. Not on the agenda, but things that have been happening very quickly and very recently. We had a court session on Monday regarding a case that has started and most of it has gone on before anyone other than me sitting at this table has been involved with the planning board.
Thank God.
Don't get court time anymore.
So one of the things that came as a result of that meeting is that the judge who's hearing the case had asked that we provide the judge with a history of the zoning bylaw dimensional requirements in the R1 district, which for the record started back in '56 under modern zoning, when we adopted the modern zoning bylaw. It's a district called RA1. Then in '67 became a district called RA, and in 1989 became a district called R1. So since I'm one of the primary people involved in the court case and my name is on the case, I spent a good portion of two days in the town clerk's office going over some 20-some-odd zoning bylaws in their printed and updated format from the town clerk's records, extracting from each of those the tables of dimensional requirements, and then looking at each one of those tables and eliminating all those tables where the dimensions in the R1 district was redundant. And we came up with a total of, since 1956, there's been four dimensional name changes in that zoning district. That table was put together along with photocopies of the actual pages from those zoning bylaws. Interesting, just for the record, as kind of an aside, that our original zoning bylaw from 1956 was a single page. It was printed on a document that I would say is roughly 36 by 24, with the map on one side and the fine print zoning bylaw on the reverse side. And it was folded up into a document that could be mailed that was four by six. That's in the town clerk's office in the records as our first zoning bylaw. Suffice to say that the town clerk today issued a two-copy-assessed stamp on those documents that I had pulled together, including the copies of those tables, and that's going to be forwarded to our legal representative who's going to forward it to the court, probably within the next day or two. Second item of interest is, we're in the process, and I think we've discussed this in general previously, but we are going to make some changes to the current stormwater management bylaw, which is a local bylaw within the town. There has been several drafted copies, go back and forth. A finished version of that is very close. I think there's a couple of minor changes that need to be made in one of the paragraphs, and I wanted to discuss this briefly with the board. There's a paragraph within that. Suffice to say, without going through the 20-some-odd pages of the stormwater management bylaw, there's a Section 6D that describes public hearing. I think the bylaw still needs some additional language cleaned up so that it's clear that it's not intended that this be a separate public hearing, independent of the subdivision control hearing and/or the special permit hearing, that it have its own legal notice and be basically done concurrently as an integral part of those two hearings. My expectation would be it should also be the same for the Conservation Commission under the Wetlands Protection Act. So it's... The problem I see in the current quote "final" version is that there's some times and days listed there which don't reconcile directly with the various times and days of the three potential processes that would be being used, either Conservation Commission under the Wetlands Protection Act, subdivision control under the planning board, and/or special permits under Section 9 of the Massachusetts general laws for the zoning act. So I think that paragraph needs to be updated better than it's currently updated because it still has specific times. The current change was simply that they changed the word, "The Stormwater Authority shall hold a public hearing," and then it gave timelines. It now says "may hold a public hearing." It's still not clear enough, in my opinion, in the bylaw that they shall be done as an integral part of the underlying hearings, if there are hearings. So my intent was to take this and send it around to the board. This does need to be ready for annual town meeting, or is planned to be ready for annual town meeting, and see what... So one of the explanations I've received is that we'll take care of the specific details and the rules and regulations. I see a bit of a problem with that in that how it's handled and under what laws and the specifics of the hearing, in my opinion, should actually be in the bylaw itself, since the rules and regulations can be adopted pretty much on an annual basis by the Stormwater Management Authority, which in this case, by the way, would be the selectman now. Now, the reason for that change is the selectman will defer to their agents, i.e. Conservation Commission or Planning Board or potentially even Zoning Board of Appeals, for some small subset of special permits. That would leave the Stormwater Management Authority as a potential...
So does that not require, would that not require two filings, Roy? Or how would that work? If it's technically a Board of Selectman, wouldn't you have to...
So the filing would be with the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen would authorize as the agents acting under the Stormwater Management Authority, as assigned by the Board of Selectmen, to be the ones that have the hearings. That would leave the Board of Selectmen under state law and case law as a quote "independent authority" who could then act on appeals to the issuance of the Stormwater Management permits. Effectively, the way that the current law is written, the selectman would not issue any permits directly. They would be issued by the underlying agents assigned by the Board of Selectmen, which would give the Board of Selectmen an independent, we believe, based on town council advice, an independent role, so that they could become the initial appeal authority. Now, part of the rationale behind that is we want to avoid a situation where we grant a stormwater management permit and the only legal appeal to that is to the courts, because we know right now that any appeal to the courts takes multiple years, typically more than two and less than three before the first formal hearing even gets held right now. We really want to avoid that situation for applicants before us because of the chilling effect that has on land use development. The expectation, when I say expectation, is that the Board of Selectmen would uphold whatever stormwater manager permit issued by their agents and potentially would still end up in the courts after that, but it would at least give an option to the applicant where if they felt they were treated in an egregious fashion, to go to the Board of Selectmen and make their case.
So you're talking about, I thought, before we had discussed the idea that stormwater management would be an integral part of whatever decision was rendered by whatever the Conservation Commission or the planning board. So now you seem to be talking as though there would be a no?
Yes.
Yes and no?
That's correct so far.
Okay.
But town council has advised us that the stormwater management component of that could still be based on the way this is currently drafted, except for the wording in '60, that the Board of Selectmen could still, acting as an appeal authority, remand that back to the board with some instructions as to why they feel that the stormwater management component of that needs to be fixed, without them having to go to court.
So is it the expectation that, you know, as we were talking to the Conservation Commission, that we were basically saying you're going to have one document in which now we're talking basically we're going to have a separate stormwater permit, stormwater management permit?
It won't be a separate document, it'll be incorporated.
So it's a whole decision?
It will be incorporated as an item in the approval language from the planning board in our behalf. We would probably still have the same requirement that we have now, which is that paragraph in our approvals that says if conservation requires a modification under their requirements under the Wetlands Protection Act, that we would discuss with conservation how we can mutually agree on what we need to do with that. So it would still basically be done the same way. And again, the intent is to, while the requirements might be slightly more rigorous under the new stormwater management bylaw than they are under subdivision control and special permits, which I don't believe is the case. Subdivision control law and our special permit requirements have always required that they meet the no-net runoff and meet the requirements that MS4 and the Massachusetts Stormwater Guidance has given us since, I believe it's close to 20 years now. We already meet those requirements.
But again, in theory, you're doing one public hearing, you're doing everything still meshed into one, you're not requiring anything.
That's correct. No second notices, no additional public hearing with their own timelines and so on and so forth. The only case where that would actually happen, we believe from the discussions we've had in our informal get-togethers on Wednesdays with our track meeting, would be those cases where there's a large section of land that's going to be worked on in some way that didn't fall under subdivision control or a special permit. Someone wants to clear a whole bunch of land to get ready to do something, but they're not actually going to file a formal permit. They would then have to file for a formal stormwater permit standalone, if you will. So that's the updates right now. So I am going to, I'll send a copy of that around, which I just received today, or it would have been sent around to everybody earlier, with a note that I would ask the board to look at Section 6D. It's a single paragraph. And as of right now, in the marked-up version, it just has "shall" crossed out with the word "may" added, and still has time dates for a bunch of things. And again, none of those time dates match up with any of the legal requirements for the three different public hearing processes the boards would act under, i.e. wetlands protection, subdivision control, or special permit, site point approvals. Okay? And we can get, we don't actively have to make a recommendation on this until our next meeting, but we'd like to get some language back to our track committee so that we can discuss revising that, so that we come up with a final version of the wording prior to going to town meeting. Would prefer not to be revising the language of what's printed in the warrant on the fly at town meeting. Given that, I think we've covered everything on the agenda. God, is there anything that we didn't?
94 West Street?
Yeah, that's not on the agenda. Oh, wow, he was asking on the agenda. Yes.
All right, so there isn't another, and I almost forgot that, but... So on West Street, there's a building that for many, many years, and it had been issued a special permit a lot of years ago, and was operating as a beauty salon for a long time. Sometime in the past two or three years, the beauty salon left that site in a business by the name of DNL Appliance, has moved into that site. DNL Appliance recently got a special permit, which I think more technically should be considered a modified special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. be considered a modified special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, who add a significant amount of space to their building, i.e. an expansion. That expansion is, under our zoning bylaw, is, is within the note of a fifty percent expansion of the existing building in a, in a non-conforming grandfathered use, if you It does significantly change the use from a beauty salon, which had its own parking requirements, now to a, a retail shop, a very specialty retail shop, if you will. They, they basically just sell appliances there. I, I don't mean to demean the product that they sell, but they've always been known to me and, and I think to most people in town as a scratch and dent appliance, appliance location. I think the majority, they, they sell both some used appliances, but the majority of the appliances they sell are actually new appliances, which come from a variety of different locations, but, but they all fall into what, what I term, and I think what we all understand is the, the scratch and dent category. I actually bought one of those appliances from a, a full retail appliance operator. They had one on the floor that had damaged. And I think we all understand the value of doing that in terms of the financial impact, but in, in any case, I, I just did note that from the special permit that's been issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals, since this was a, a grandfathered, non-conforming use, it is their authority to issue the special permit, that it will dramatically reduce the parking on the site as the, the new buildings are basically going to areas that are now clearly paved and lined as parking spaces. My only concern is that, that we work carefully with the Building Commissioner in the future as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals to, to make sure that when a use changes on a site, that it's made clear to the applicant as part of whatever the finding is, whether it be made by the Planning Board, the Zoning Commissioner, and/or the Zoning Board of Appeals, that a significant reduction in parking spaces means that it's probably impossible to sometime down the road in the future to go back to a beauty salon at that location, as the square foot, footage of the building will increase by some forty-plus percent. And the parking that was required when it was a beauty salon is, is dramatically less now with that added building there. I did note in the special permit issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals, well, I think that the permit is fairly well-written. There's no direct mention to the fact that it, let's say, constrains the potential future use of that site, given the, the addition of the buildings and, and the reduction of the parking that, that resulted in. So as, as you all know, we've, we've had ongoing discussions with the, the Building Commissioner as to the impact of, of buildings that are built with, under a special permit for, for whatever the use is, but where that use has a very minimal requirement for parking. And then even as the buildings are being built, or before they've even been built, the, the use of those buildings has changed, which dramatically changes the, everything from the parking requirements to the traffic flow impact and all of that. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. At this point in time, we as a board don't have anything before us in terms of, of things that need to be done for that site, but if any member of the board would, wishes to offer some, and I'd ask that the, that, that permit be, be emailed out to all of the members of the board so they have a chance to look at it, maybe even a copy of the previous permit that was there for the, the beauty salon at the site.
The recent special permit?
The recent one.
I think that was sent out to all board members already.
Okay, it did.
Not the old one.
I'd like, if, if we could, to send a copy of the old one as well. Other than the fact that the, the parking changed fairly dramatically, which potentially in the future would constrain the use of that site, we, we want to, we want to be careful with that and make sure that the applicants are aware of what constraints they're going to fall under when they do something like that. I'm not, I'm not sure that that's covered very well in, in the permit. That's going to be especially true when there's a real estate trust or a, some kind of, of corporate entity that owns the property, that, that has a, a, either a renter or a leasor or whatever, using the property. But once that property use is changed and, and it changes the parking, then, then potentially that, under our zoning bylaw, that, that greatly minimizes what can potentially be there in the future.
The hair salon special permit, was that Planning Board or Zoning Board?
I think that was also Zoning Board because I think it was in a district...
A research event.
Yeah. I, I think it was Zoning Board. Originally, it was a small retail building with three units. I think that special permit may well have been the Planning Board. When they converted the entire building to a, a beauty salon, I believe that was a second special permit issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals, but that goes back quite a ways now.
Long time.
Yeah. My memory doesn't quite go back that far anymore. I do remember there was a special permit issued for retail business which could have, which would have allowed the building to be divided up into three units. And I know at one point, there was at least two retail businesses running out of that prior to the, to the beauty salon.
Yeah. Well, we start, see what we get and we'll send it.
The two exhibits to the, to the email that was sent around didn't, didn't, just the decisions there, so you don't have a copy of the plan or the elevation? Do we have a copy of that?
There is, there is a plan.
Oh. Okay. Don't think I have it.
I think the plan wasn't, wasn't included in the email today, if I...
Okay. I didn't see it and...
Roy, other than the loss of parking, is there anything else that we should be looking at?
I, I think my, my only comment was that all of the permits we do as well as, is the suggestion would be the permits the Zoning Board of Appeals do. We should pay close, close attention that when we're changing a use like that and, and allowing more building to cover, that, that site simply has minimal available space. There's wetlands issues. There's a septic system that has to be near the, near the, nearer the street because of the requirements in, in the wetlands areas and so on and so forth, that it dramatically changes the available parking at the site.
I see.
And, and my opinion, it's important that we make sure that the applicant, because in some cases, the applicant is a real estate trust or some LLC or one of those other multiple entities that owns businesses today.
It's in your book.
Some kind of corporate incorporation or whatever.
Oh, no, it's not. Never mind.
So when they, when they come forward and, and ask for something like that, they should be made aware officially that once they do that and that building gets built and, and, and removes existing parking, that if you look at the table of parking requirements for multiple various retail uses, that, that that crosses off some of the things that could be done there.
I see.
And we just need to, I think it's our duty to make sure that the applicant before us knows that, so he can make a decision whether he wants to continue with, with the additions. I mean, it's very possible that the corporate entity that applied for that special permit from ZBA is in fact the same principal as, as DNL Appliance. I don't know that. Those things get a little tricky to track when you're trying, because when you go to the registry of deeds typically, it doesn't say who the principals in the LLC are. You then have to go to a different state website and try and track that down. And for better or for worse, the state doesn't do an awful good job of keeping those records up to date. We've seen that multiple times in the past. But it should be, it should be on, on the board's in-town responsibility to make sure that the applicant understands that.
Okay.
My view is that should be written directly into the permit so that they're put on notice that, that, you know, there's a potential issue there in the future, if you were to try and come back and say, "I want to go back to a beauty salon," or a hair salon. I don't know what the correct term for those are these days, but whatever, whatever that is.
Excuse me, Roy.
Yes.
There are also two memos, one from the deputy fire chief and one from the health agent. I put on everybody's desk.
So is the one that gets marked four ninety-four West Street? I do know that's, that's from Craig, Craig Windsor, who's the safety officer, also the deputy fire chief, safety officer of the fire department. Yeah, so I do think that's correct. I think based on, on the presentation that was made that, that I heard bits and pieces on to the Zoning Board of Appeals is, is that most of the additional spaces for warehouse to store, store materials, i.e. appliances, I would guess from, from, since my quick view when I went through there the other day is that's all they do is they sell appliances. I'm sorry. Feel free to step up to the table, Charlie.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
My name is Charlie Woodward. I work for Professional Land Survey Associates, and I actually represent DNL Appliance. So I can answer a lot of the questions that you brought. Thank you very much.
Charlie, while you're right by the mic, could you give your, your identification information quickly?
Sure, I'd be glad to. My name is Charlie Woodward. I work for Professional Land Survey Associates, and I'm here representing DNL Appliance at four ninety-four West Street in East Bridgewater. If there are any particular questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
So is, is, is DNL actually the owner of that property?
Yes, sir, he is. And there is actually a note on the plan. It's called F and K Nominee Trust.
Yes.
And F and K is his son and his daughter, Frank and Kate.
Okay. So that answers one of the questions that wasn't totally clear from, from looking at the documentation. So I did note there was a nominee trust that owned it.
Yeah.
And it was, it was a DBA, DNL Appliance.
Yeah, David and Linda Tolanoli.
Okay. So, so the other, the other comment, and I, I think you understand where that comment is coming from, that it's extremely important that applicants understand when they make a change like this and take away some of the parking, that that changes the list of, within the zoning bylaw, there's requirements for parking, the things that they can no longer meet now get crossed off.
Of course. And we have gone over that with them in detail. As, as you mentioned, the addition, he is now, has always done business up the street at the old Ira Smith's.
Yes.
On the other side of, of, in West Bridgewater.
Yep.
And what he'd like to do is move the things he has stored up there down here. So those, that addition will be in fact for storage. Okay? And we are, there is a note also on the plan in the lower left-hand corner. Right now, we have, I believe it's fourteen parking spaces, and we're going to be losing six of them, okay, with the building. But the original building, when he bought it three years ago, was in fact three businesses. It was a salon, it was a nail shop, and it was a tanning salon. Okay? So there were actually three businesses within that, which, as you can imagine, have much more traffic than David has.
No, no question of that. In certain times, those times when my wife and other people, because my wife used to go there.
Oh.
It was an extremely busy place with all the parking spaces full and so on and so forth, but...
Okay, sir.
Okay. All right. So that, that's all I had, and, and this wasn't necessarily to pick on this site, but...
No.
This has become an ongoing issue that we want to, we want to try and better address at the time permits are being issued, to make sure that when any applicant comes before us and an engineering firm does plans for them, it's incumbent upon them to understand that if they put up a building that requires minimal parking and then before the building is even finished, come back and say, "Now I want to make that something else," that based on the amount of land you use, the available space for parking and things like that, you may not be able to use it for something else.
We also, I believe you also, I, I talked to the board health officer today in detail. I think you also got a, an email from her, okay, Jean Marie. And one of our major concerns on this particular site also, okay, is the limitations of the septic system. Okay? So that's something else. We've been working with this client about a year and a half, two years, you know, a step at a time. We didn't want to just, you know, go full blast and spend all their money and end up with a denial, because we had so many boards to go through.
So does what, does what you've designed take into account what the board of health agent has referenced in the email?
Yes. Okay. And verbally, we've gone over more today, and I assured her today, I've known her from before, okay? She's been in the business for many, many years, as have I. Okay? And I, I assured her that nothing would happen on that site until the board of health is one hundred percent satisfied with everything that's supposed to be done. So, which goes without saying anyway, we're not going to get permits without the approval of all the, the boards.
In terms of, of building design, are we looking at something that's consistent with what's there now in appearance?
The building that's going to be going up, they're designing it now, it's basically a metal building, okay? So it's two stories. It will be the same color as the building that's there now, but it's, you know, it's a, it's a warehouse type of building.
So is the second story used for warehouse as well? You said it's three stories?
Yes, yes, ma'am, there is. And I explained that to him before we went to the Board of Appeals. The, the Board of Appeals is very suspect of second floors, okay, that could possibly be turned into apartments at a later time. So I explained that to him, that, you know, you're going to have to go through it with the building inspector. He's going to have to be comfortable that it's a mezzanine for storage of appliances. Okay? He also sells smaller appliances, microwaves, washing machines, you know, dishwashers. So everything is in a ten-foot, you know, three-door refrigerator, although he sells those too. But he sells a lot to contractors, okay? People, believe it or not, people that build houses also use these type of appliances, you know? And he sells a lot of new things too. Okay? So he sells a lot with, does a lot of work with contractors, does a lot of work with apartment owners, things such as that. He doesn't do a lot of off-the-street business, although he does do a, a percentage of that.
So, so you, you've got a nice Cape Cod-style building, I guess I'd say, with a nice pitched roof and so forth, and you're going to add on a metal warehouse building to that?
Well, it's, from what I understand, it's going to be a metal building, okay? And it's going to be a, a building used to store his appliances.
Which will look like what?
Which will look like a metal building, I, you know? I mean, do I think it's going to be as, as stylish as the building that's there? I, I honestly don't. Okay? But he is, you know, he, he's putting trim on it. From the, from the pictures that I've seen, he's putting trim on it. It's going to be the same color as that building, and we've got it placed in such a way that we're trying not to, we're trying to match the roof lines and things such as that. Okay? And I've actually drawn sketches, again, for the design firm who's going to be doing the building.
I guess my, my view of it is I'm probably less concerned with the location of the building and, and that type of, of dynamic than I am with the appearance of the building. So I would look for a, some form of a rendering before. I mean, I think that's part of, or should, I, I think it is now part, Roy, is it not, of our, of our review process here on a site plan?
Yeah, it's, it's still, I have to touch base with the, the Building Commissioner as well, because I'm not sure where he feels this fits, since the special permit was issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals. It wasn't clear whether or not he expects to see a, a second site plan approval diagram or not, or whether, under his view of, of the special permit as issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals is all that they need.
We, we did in fact submit those to the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, it says that there was a front elevation plan that was submitted. Did we get a copy of that?
That would be in the, the zoning board file.
And, uh, through, I'm sorry, through the Board of Appeals filing, we did submit front side and rear elevation plans, and, and actually a color rendering of what the building would look like on the site. And we also obtained conservation approval to construct the building in, in the area that shows on the plan, the proposed area.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would like a little bit more information if there is indeed to be a site plan approval here. So my suggestion would be that we continue this to the next meeting at seven forty-five PM to determine, A, whether there is to be a site plan... to determine, A, whether there is to be a site plan review, if not, we're good. If there is, then I'd like to see those renderings and have some, you know, further discussion potentially.
Okay, so why don't we reserve some time at our next meeting to have a, a general discussion on this? I'll be in the office for a while tomorrow, and I'll, I will, I will check with the Building Commissioner at this, to see what he feels needs to be done in addition, if anything, in addition to what's already been done. Anybody, anybody else have anything for tonight? God, have we got anything else left for tonight?
No, not, not agenda-wise.
Okay. All right, so I guess at this point in time, we entertain a motion to adjourn. That'll be me. So, that's a, a motion, Lala, do we have a second? Motion, Lala, second Ken, to adjourn. My computer decided to go asleep, but my watch is two minutes fast, so we'll call it. A motion to adjourn is on the table at eight-ten, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we'll show that as unanimous vote of all members present in voting, and we're adjourned at eight-ten PM, thank you all.